It's just a welcome to Lincoln. Welcome to Whitman, welcome to what you've inherited. You know, Lincoln had asked to sit in tonight and just kind of get up to speed. You know, I don't know. I know you've sat with both superintendents Dennis and Bruce. You know, our board. I think we have a very good board. A lot of us have been on it for a lot, really all of us have been on it for considerable amount of time. Different varied experiences, construction experience, some town experience, some contracts and negotiation, things like that experience. So like it's as a department, we're very active. As a board, we're very active in managing our department from the little things to obviously some major projects that we have coming up and some major projects that we've been doing. Because the department, we do a very good job of maintaining our utility. You know, Dennis and Bruce both been in DPW for a lot of years and you know, certainly welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And as I said, I think as you and I talked about briefly and you know, had spoken about with Dennis and I believe Bruce as well. You know, I mostly just wanted to come in and introduce myself to the members of the board who I hadn't met and just say hello and thank you very much for that welcome. And I can certainly absolutely concur, you know, with everything I've seen in my short time so far in town. We have a very well-run Department of Public Works and, and you know, really well-run board and a really great staff and two really great superintendents. So completely agree and mostly just want to sit in and say hello and, and you know, I'm very happy to participate any future meetings that you want me at, you know, you know, let me know. I'm happy to be here and be of assistance or not, you know, as you folks see fit, but I appreciate the opportunities to come in and say hello to folks that I hadn't met yet and you know, and get to know folks a little bit.
Sure, sure. Welcome. Lincoln, nice to meet you.
Thank you, David. You too.
Nice to meet you.
Virtually, yes. Virtually sometime in person soon, hopefully.
If we're voting, I would suggest you stay for the executive session if you have time. If not, we definitely would probably should catch up with you on a few products we have going on. I know Kevin's talked with you. Open for the update tonight.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I'll definitely stay for as long as I can in the executive session tonight if, you know, the majority of the board wants that and and definitely want to continue the conversation. I know Kevin and I, well, we were playing some phone tag on it, but I spoke with Dennis about it. About how it would be great to, for the Board of Selectmen, just to hear about the sewer force main project coming up, just so they're fully up to speed on that. And it sounds like we're sort of tentatively looking at March 23rd for that. So certainly, you know, I'll leave it up to this board, you know, who you want there and who you don't. I know Kevin, I think, and Dennis both said, you know, I think it would be a great idea to have environmental partners there to talk about some of the technical aspects that I certainly can't speak to intelligently. But you know, whomever else from the board, as you folks see appropriate, would want to be there. It'd be great to have you there too on March 23rd.
Just a question, Lincoln, just to, would we do a joint meeting? Because if we have more than two commissioners, right, it would have to be a joint meeting?
Yeah, if you want, sure, I'd be happy to have a joint meeting and, and, and just have you folks at the beginning or towards the beginning of the meeting. It looks like Superintendent Simonak from the schools is going to be coming in too. So seeing as how he has probably even more meetings than we do, I might probably sort of have him at the top. And then if you want to have a joint meeting at, you know, whatever, I don't know, 7:15 or 7:20, if more than two members want to be there, I'll leave it up to you folks. And absolutely, if you want to have a joint meeting, I think that's a good idea if you want.
So yeah, I'll, I'll, we'll talk with the board and if there's more than two of us want to attend, then we'll set that up. If not, then it'll just be a couple of us with you know, Dennis and environmental partners, he'll put on, you know, he's done this plenty of times. He can put together a very thorough and accurate presentation.
Absolutely. From ZIAD?
Yeah, from ZIAD.
He's like, yeah, okay, great. That sounds great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mark.
Thanks. Sorry I'm late.
That's right. We're just talking with Lincoln, getting him up to speed on a couple of things. Welcome him. Alright, so we have the meeting minutes from February 9th. That Amy had sent out if everyone had a chance to read those. There are no questions. I'll entertain a motion to accept those.
The minutes as as printed.
So we have a motion seconded by Mark. All in favor of the minutes as stated. Ken?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Mark? Mark?
He's on mute, I think.
He muted you.
Yes.
Yes. And I am a yes. Alright, minutes are accepted. Bomb through some of this basics up here. So we got some trash abatements. The saga continues. Mostly, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight senior discounts. And two incorrect codes. Does that just give me like a billing for the wrong number of?
Yeah, so I guess from what I understand from Lonnie, that was a person who is a one family. But for some reason, the last bill that went out, they got billed as a two family. So we're just crediting them the difference for the one. And there's only one, two, three, four senior discounts.
Yeah, I, the page printed twice. Four senior discounts in one just incorrect billing. So the total $385 in abatements for trash for the senior discounts and the one incorrect.
So the total is 1325 in abatement, right? No, I'm sorry, 385, you're right. Just forgot me.
I say, yeah, it's 285 for the incorrect billing and then 25 apiece for the four senior discounts. So 385 total.
Motion to accept is read.
Motion by Wayne, seconded by Ken. All in favor, Ken?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna say it again. We're all set up for trash for next year, right? So we don't have to go through all this.
Um.
We hope, we hope.
We're going to be in the process of using the same company that does our water billing to take over the trash billing and when we do that, we'll make, we're going to make sure that everything's carried over as far as senior discounts.
Senior discounts. Okay. So we'll have to go through hundreds of abatements.
Yes.
Okay. And we had one water and sewer. This is an abatement, 170 Sportsman's Trail. Water in the amount of 12470 sewer and the amount of 7740. And it was double billed with the old meter usage.
Yes. That should have been in the last big round that we did, but it got put in a folder and misplaced by me. I apologize.
Make the motion that we accept it as read.
Seconded.
Alright, motion by Ken, seconded by Wayne. Ken?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Alright, so that's it for abatements. Heavy equipment operator first class. Bruce or Dennis?
Um, so Brad Dootus was the only person that applied and was qualified at the same time for this position.
Yep, I make a motion that we accept Brad Dootus and we'll come up to first class heavy equipment operator.
A second, Ash.
Alright, motion by Wayne, seconded by Ken. Any discussion? Ken?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Mark?
Uh, yes.
And I am a yes, so. Brad gets his raise.
Sorry, mine's very delayed. Mine's delayed tonight.
Yeah, I don't know. Would be like it's not like we're that big of a town, right? Next, I'll just go down the list. There's a bunch of stuff, but we'll go why don't we have some time here? We'll kind of take a couple. We got go out of order. We got the force main article. And then the sewer rate increase. So obviously, we've talked a lot about the project. You know, COVID canceled the special town meeting that we're hoping to do over the winter. So now we're going to be into what we hope will be May, you know, the annual meeting in May that we can get the article. You know, we did talk last meeting about, you know, yes, we're going to have to increase rates. We're expecting to have to raise rates $3 per unit on the sewer side. And doesn't make sense to maybe start that process now. We have April billings coming up. Our next opportunity would be in October. We would have to take the full raise. And if we kind of take a little bit now and take a little bit in October to lessen the burden. So we had voted at the last meeting that we were acceptable to that as a board. A dollar 50 increase for this April billing. And like I said, then when we get final numbers, you know, bid document, you know, bid the project and all that and finalize funding, then we can make the final adjustments in the October billing. So I know Dennis, you had been doing a lot of legwork of what that entailed. I guess Lincoln, just for your, we've, I've been on the board since 2008. And I think we've only had two increases. So we're not really familiar with the process. I know Dennis has been doing some digging and we know there's a 30-day wait period. You know, so I don't know, Dennis, if you have anything else to add to that or?
I, I'm, I actually, I checked with Peter and actually I asked Lincoln too, if he do, if we could find, but all I've been able to come up with through the Massachusetts Water Works Association is that you're, the board has, because you're publicly owned, the Whitman Water System is publicly owned. It's not a shareholder-owned utility. What's required is that you place it on the agenda prior to voting on it, which just the agenda does. Okay. And then you actually, you know, you know, so everybody's aware of it and now the board, you know, anybody that wanted to comment can, you know, if they'd so desired. If now is, now, now after you've placed it prior to the meeting on the agenda that you're going to vote for it, you would, you would have a vote for the increase. That's, and that's all I, that's all I can find that's required.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, thank you, Dennis. And I actually was talking with Peter about a couple of different things, Town Council, about a couple of things, different things today. And I asked him about that too, just to confirm, you know, and thank you, Dennis, for doing all that. And, and he, you know, just to confirm, he, he said that, that exactly as Dennis said, all it's required is that it's on the agenda. Obviously, it was on the agenda. And that, what he did say, he said it's not required, but he did say he, he strongly recommend that on, you know, I know on, on the first bill, that there's some sort of explanation as to what's going on. You know, and I thought I'd certainly agree that that's a good idea, just so folks have some sort of idea. If they read their bill closely, they'll see, okay, this is going up because of the expected capital costs or, you know, whatever you folks wanted to say. But he did strongly recommend that. But of course, that's up to you folks. So.
That's a good idea.
No, yeah.
And the only other thing that I was able to find is, you know, so when we build the April billing, it's for water that was previously, you know, used already. So there were a couple of comments about, that I read about, you know, you should not start, you know, the new rate until people, it's been announced. So to bill in arrears under a new rate is might be something you want to consider. In other words, the, whatever the new rate you would just apply to the October billing, not the April one. Because, and the April billing, that's for water that's already been used. And there's, you know, they, well, you know, if I don't, if people will, you know, there were comments I kind of read, you know, here and there about people who did, or towns that did, was that you didn't give me a chance. I would have conserved more. If I hadn't known that, I would have moved. I mean, this, there were a myriad of reasons that, you know, you know, we should announce the new rate before we actually charge it.
Well, the DPW has already paid for several breaks. We've already paid for engineering fees. We've, you know, this is coming out of the budget that we, well, the surplus money that we have now. So that money has to be replenished. It's not, we've already spent money on this project prior to this meeting.
But beyond that, Dennis, we're trying to increase it slowly rather than just one lump sum of $3.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I guess the challenge is of, you know, we're only billed twice a year. It doesn't, doesn't help us, you know, we were just trying to lessen the burden, you know.
I just suggest, since, since Peter, it looks like he, Peter's on the call here and I know, you know, just legally, I don't know the answer to this, but I'm sorry to put him on the spot, but maybe he might want to weigh in on that, just, just to make sure we got all the eyes and cross the teeth. That's all. So. Sorry, Peter.
Was there a question?
We're, we're just talking about increasing the, you know, the sewer rates. And I know, so like, you know, you've talked with Lincoln and I don't know if you've spoken with Dennis, but certainly the three of you have all had conversations about it as we have as a board. And, you know, there's going to be a big impact to our rates for this force main project. And we wanted to make a increase now for our April billings to lessen the hit when ultimately October comes and we need to get all the the money. So Dennis had brought up, you know, sometimes people get upset because you're billing in arrears that, yeah, well, you increased the rate, but I already used the water. And, you know, just what your thoughts are on that, you know, or, you know, like I said, all we're trying to do is lessen the hit. And we're expecting a $3 increase. We're trying to do a $1.50 now and we do a $1.50 in the October.
So the, the, you voted, have you already voted to increase the rates?
No.
No.
So the question is whether to vote to increase the rates and apply that to the next bill for which water has, and sewer has already been used, right?
Correct.
I, I don't know the, the answer to that legally. Can, I can certainly look into it for you and you know, from a practical perspective, it's outside, it's outside my wheelhouse. So hey, you know, I don't know what you all think is best. I can't tell you what is best, but Dennis may, off the top of his head, but I haven't looked into that big issue about billing in arrears. My understanding of rate increases is that it's supposed to be a public process. There's no formal procedural requirements for, for raising other than a vote by the rate-setting authority in a public meeting. And as long as you've complied with that, you know, certainly you could do it to the next bill after, after the vote. But I don't know about this bill.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a maybe a public relations kind of quandary, you know. And I think we're trying to do the right thing to, you know, everyone doesn't get hit. You know, I, I guess, if I'm thinking about it, if we wait till October, we're going to be doing the same thing. Because we're going to need, we're going to need to apply that money, that rate increase to the October billing. Or we're not going to be able to pay for our first payment, you know, our first payment on the sewer project. So I, I, I don't, I see that happen no matter what. Some Yes, Mark.
Question?
Yes.
But we, Wayne had talked about, you know, at that last meeting, we did take a vote for increasing that rate. I mean, I gotta look at the agenda again. I mean, our past meeting, but we talked about raising that rate. I mean, just to get ahead of the curve, I guess.
Yeah.
Right, you know, instead of hitting everybody all at once with that one big I'm just trying to do it now, you know, I apologize.
The bottom line, it's going to have to go up $3 anyways. I just think it's better than doing a $1.50 now and a $1.50 in October. Where people aren't getting hit with $3 right now. But the bill has to get paid. And there's, there, there is no other choice. We don't, we don't have a choice. I'm the last guy and everybody knows this.
I know.
That wants to raise the rates a nickel. I don't want to do it. But we don't have a choice, guys.
Oh, I said, I, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I, the only requirement that I was told about was the announcement that it was on the agenda prior, which you fulfilled. And a public meeting, at the, at the meeting after that was on the agenda, you would vote to increase the rate. And you, I would say that this qualifies for that. The, what I was saying about people who commented in other towns that had rate increases, you know, the, you know, that was just something you could consider. But we are behind the gun as far as this goes. I mean, in front of the gun, that wasn't a requirement. That's just something that the board could, could take on if they want.
Kevin, do you mind if I jump in?
Sure, good.
I did talk to Dennis, that's what Dennis and I discussed. He accurately conveyed that. And then I also had a conversation with Lincoln. And I may have said this to one of them, but I do think it's, again, I'm not sure of the legality of that specific question, but I do think it's a good practice from a consumer perspective to give folks notice, specific notice if you can of the rate increases before they go to effect. So folks know what they're paying for. That, again, I don't have any thing to cite for you on that, but I do think that's good.
And that could be placed on their bill when they receive the bill.
Right.
The, you know, the explanation as to why it's going up a dollar 50.
Yeah, I think that's, that's very good business practice. You know, I mean, we are at this point with the waterware business, you know, so.
And I, this is just a suggestion, but maybe a little leaflet goes out with the bill. You know, with an explanation. You know, to go along with the bill. Not just a little blurb that says, guess what? You know, just an explanation. And I, I know a lot of people know, and a lot of people are going to have comments, any, you know, you know, but an explanation of short, you know, paragraph as to why. And just to let them know that it'll probably be going up another dollar 50 in October to prepare for it.
Right. Yeah, we can do a quick little summary of the project.
Yeah.
That way too, actually, timing would be, you know, that's middle of April. Hopefully, again, fingers crossed, we'd be in the town meeting early May. So you know, give people the information before they come to town meeting too. Lincoln, I see your note here. We could, yeah, I mean, suggesting, you know, if we want to vote for the increase and just have Peter just double check.
Right.
You know, legally that we can, you know, bill in arrears. Like I said, we're going to have to do it in October anyways, but you know, we can check the legal standing.
Yeah. So if the feeling of the board is really strong that you want to raise it now, my suggestion in the note there to Kevin just now was just that if you know, the board could vote, the, they just have the motion be that the rates are going up in April. And just have it be contingent on a legal opinion about whether or not that is, that's possible legally in arrears. And if that's what the board wants, then hopefully it is legally possible. And if not, at least the message will be getting out there in the bill. And the only note of caution, I think it's, for what it's worth, my two cents, I think it's a great idea to have some explanation of the project in the bill, if that's what you folks want to do. I would just say, just, I think, be careful about advocating for it. And using public funds to advocate for it. I mean, I know, I think everybody on this call, including myself, would want to advocate for it, but just be careful about, you know, using the public funds to advocate for its passage. That's all. Just more factual than advocating. That's all.
Good tip. Yeah, the presentation is critical. But to be clear, you know, we're, all the members of the board would not want to do this. We don't want to have to do some of the repairs we're faced with doing for the town, but we can't let the infrastructure fail either. So it puts us in the unpopular position.
Right. Yeah. Failure is not an option here.
Well.
Alright, someone draft it.
Mark, you have something?
I was just saying, I mean, it's, I don't think we have to sell it. Just let them know what the problem's going to be. If it doesn't get taken care of, let's not sell it. We just got to tell them what the problems or repercussions should be if we don't do it. You know, what it's going to cost us in the long run if we have a major break. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. I don't know if there's any discussions. I'll certainly entertain a, a motion to increase the rates if.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we're still going to increase it in the May billing or April billing, whatever.
As long as it's legal, Kenny.
As long as it's legal.
Right. And then and if, if Peter tells us something different, then we would still take a vote, maybe next meeting to increase, but it wouldn't take effect till October. So at least we have that placeholder. You know, because if we wait, we might be in the same, you know, eventually we'd be in the same predicament we are now if we can't build in the rear. So we, we may still want to take some action in the coming months to vote a rate increase if, if we can't do it legally and build so the best. Yes, Mark?
I just say, like, if we can't do it now, we should at least say that by October, it's got to be the full rate. You know, if we're going to have funding, it's going to be paid for, you know, at some point, let's, I guess, put that in place where we want to go up, you know, 50% of it. And then by October, if not, if it doesn't get done by then, it's got to be 100% of what we think the increase is going to be, you know.
Okay.
Kevin, can I ask a question before you do the motion? You guys voted on that at the last meeting. Does something have to be voted on for that vote or something?
Yeah, yeah. I think some of the, the public notice and things like that, that this covers that probably wasn't covered in the last meeting. So.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought we'd voted last meeting.
We did, Mark, because I'm looking at the, came out the old business, water and sewer, and as a dendum, we did the sewer rate increase.
Right. No, you're correct. The, the from what I understand though, in, in to I don't know, make it legal or follow the procedure that, that, that you should, is that it has to be on the agenda prior to the vote, prior to the meeting for the vote. prior to the vote, prior to the meeting for the vote. So, you know, if, if, you know, I know you decided to raise the rates at the last meeting, but, you know, so now it's been on the agenda for, since that meeting. Um, and the agenda's a public, you know, and the public can see. And, um, you know, anybody that had a desire to comment certainly has that, uh, uh, opportunities tonight.
So do we make a motion to actually raise it? What were we talking about last month? I make a motion as Wayne stated last month to raise it to a dollar fifty.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mark, second by Wayne. I guess I just amend that pending confirmation from legal counsel that we can bill for the past usage. So so we have motion of second for dollar fifty increase pending legal counsel for just the sewer rate. Which would bring the rate to six dollars, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
All in favor, Ken?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Wayne, do you, can I ask a question? When does the, um, maybe this is a question for Amy or Dennis, but when, when do you begin issuing April bills?
So, so can I answer that, Dennis? Um, the bills go out April fifteenth, but all bills have to be finalized usually the week before that, so customized data has time to process them.
All right, so if you can get back to us, Peter, we'd appreciate that. We could talk about the force main article a little bit, if Peter doesn't mind, just maybe for a few minutes, and then we can go into executive. You know, just Lincoln, I know your time, you get the selectmen if you had any. You know, the the, the twenty-third, Dennis and I will talk to Ziad, and certainly we can make a presentation to the selectmen. You know, we've talked a lot about it as a board. And the proposed costs and, you know, I think the, 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 a lot of the questions are the the alternates and should we or shouldn't we you know, rehab the existing pipe? You know, we, we've talked of, I, I like how we have it set up where it's at alts, we can take them, we can not take them. You know, I think the market right now is very competitive, I think we'll get some good pricing. There's a lot of work out there, but there's also a lot of people bidding work. So you know, certainly, well, anyone on the board wants to add any other comments, but that was, that was our thinking, my thinking in the boards that you know, we set it up that way, you know, the base project is probably thirteen to fourteen million. And the adults are about two million. Plus or minus, you know, obviously general conditions. And then gives us the ability to accept them or not, you know. And if we don't want to do it, then I guess we then just make a large payment against the bond right off the bat, you know, and then so that was some of our thoughts, certainly, if any of the board has any other comments.
Yeah, the slaving of the old, uh, the old main. Cost. What's the cost?
About two million?
That was, yeah.
And the estimates that Ziad did, it's about two million.
Kevin, are you looking at it?
I think it's four million.
It looks.
Are you doing, going by the January twelfth revision?
So his adult A five
one point two.
One point two, and they get another five or six in Alt B, so one point eight. General conditions, you know, bonds, insurances, it's, it's maybe two and a half, I mean, you know, all the general conditions and insurances and, you know, overheads are just percentages at that point, you get another twenty twenty-two to twenty-three percent that we put in there for, uh, you know, general conditions and overhead costs, so you know, you're one point eight. Little over two, you know, two and a half.
Two and a half million to sleeve a pipe that we're not gonna use? That's, that's over half a building. That's over half a new DPW building.
No, and a we don't have to do it.
It just doesn't make any sense to sleeve a pipe that we're never going to use. Right? I would nice, be nice to have three excavators too, but we're, we're never gonna use them. It just doesn't, to me, that doesn't make any sense.
We ran with one for how many years, so, I mean, having a second would be nice, but maybe something we can think about in the future, maybe not twenty years down the road, maybe seven or eight years down the road, but I mean, that's, yeah.
Can I address that? Um, the, the problem is, you, you know, if, if, uh, if you're to move with, um, later, we're gonna pave the road by then, so we need, you know, you got, you need to make the decision before we pave. Okay, whether you're gonna go to, to B, you know, um, and, and I, I can see what you're, you know, trying to save the money. But we, you know, um, uh, basically you, you can't, you know, you, you have to make that decision before you pave. You know, because we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna open the road up after. You know, there has to be, uh, there has to be, um, uh, access points for camera and cleaning every fifteen hundred feet. You know, on, uh, on Auburn Street. So, you know, uh, we, we gotta do that first before we pave, and, and then, you know, then of course, you know, if you find out that the pipe itself is in, in, uh, in extremely poor, uh, poor condition, the, the, you know, the, um, there's no sense of, uh, proceeding to the last, um, alternate B.
Yeah, and, and I can't, I can't even see, we know that it's failed. It, where there's peat areas. We know that pipe is filled, that it's porous. So why are we even looking at it? Because there's a lot more that's in peat. Thousands of feet. We're just wasting money.
Oh, Wayne, I think it was Ziad suggested as a bypass potential, you know, alternate for, it's built in suspenders, so if something goes wrong with the new one, I don't know, in ten years, then we'd have that option, or maybe as maintenance, if Dennis, the guys do maintenance, you show off one foot the other. But I'm not an expert at that either, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not advocating for it, I'm just saying that was the concept.
I understand the concept, but what I'm saying is that as a taxpayer, two and a half million dollars for a pipe that we're never gonna open and turn on. It just, it's nice to have. Well, it's, it's.
I mean, the, the way Ziad has it set up right now, they're alternate, so it, it's after bid, we choose whether we want to spend the money or not. We're not choosing now.
But we're, we're gonna look at the pipe, right? That costs money. And see if it's worth doing.
No, that's all, that's, that's part of it. He has a, there's two parts of it, there's one, the investigation, and two, to reline it, those are the two adults to the contract, there's nothing in the contract right now. The base bid contract is to put a new pipe in.
Right.
And just abandon the one where it is.
But the investigation costs money.
Right, that, that's an alternate, that's not in the base bid.
Correct.
So we can choose after bid if we want to do it or not. I mean, or we can just eliminate it, I just.
I just, it doesn't make any sense to me, we're, we're gonna raise the rates to three dollars on these people, but then throw in a couple of, two and a half million to have a pipe hanging around that never gonna have sewage put in it, just in case. Well, I mean, we're not in the business of just in case. We don't have two ladder trucks at the fire department just in case, because they cost a million bucks a piece. So I, I, I just, it, it doesn't make any sense to me to do that. I think we should abandon it, put the new pipe in and run the new pipe, and we'll probably be good for sixty years. But I, I, I just can't see, and then maybe we only have to raise it two dollars and fifty cents instead of three bucks, so you know, once we find out where we're at. But it, it just doesn't make any sense to me, that's just, I, I think it's just throwing money away.
I'd just say we've only had one pipe for years, so, I mean, I would, that's obviously having that would be a plus, but if it's a lot of money to, you know, just to look at it and instead of just capping it.
Off of beyond that, you're still gonna maintain it, you still have to, uh, keep it up to snuff, uh, and switch things back and forth to make sure it's still workable if ever you do have to, uh, use the backup. So I gotta agree with Wayne, I, I'd say be ended in place, Mark said the same thing basically.
Well, if they line it and it's getting deteriorated from the outside, what's that do? I mean, it's gonna keep deteriorating from the outside, the old pipe. You know, and if it's not used for seven years, well, where's it gonna be? How, how well is that interior? Just because you're lining the inside, how good is that? How long? And what can they guarantee on a lining? If you're lining the thing. Dennis, you know, or, I mean, if you're lining the pipe, is that gonna be?
No, I'm.
That's not structural, that's not structural.
Um, I, I, uh, I, I I mean, there are some advantages to having the redundant pipe, but then, you know, it's, it's, you know, there's also there's the cost to be considered. And, um, the expected lifetime of a new pipe is, is, you know, is very high, up in the ninety-year range. The, um, you know, having, relining the old one is, you know, for a redundant pipe would, you know, it would be nice to have, but you know, you're absolutely right, Mark, when you say, look at how many years we've done with one all, you know. That's a, that's a decision you guys are gonna have to make as far as um, whether, you know.
To me, if this pipe is gonna be a longer life, if you're gonna, if you're gonna actually just I, I, to me, I'd say, you, you, if you're gonna spend the money, you know, lining the inside, that don't, that doesn't do nothing for the outside of the pipe, and if the peat areas, you know, if, and if it's gonna deteriorate over time, we spent two million dollars on lining a pipe, it all of a sudden has no backbone to it, we're wasting our money.
So. I just think that we should keep the cost as low as we can and, and put a good pipe in the ground. But keep the cost low. As low as we can. So that these people's rates are going any higher than they absolutely have to go.
And, and how about in five years, how about in five years from now, we actually looked at that pipe to see where it's at, you know? And then maybe I'd be like, huh?
You're back to you, you're not gonna drill holes in a road, even a five-year-old road, just to conduct and um, you know, inspection.
I think if we don't line it right away, there's other problems, there's.
Yeah, I think it's gonna sit there with, it, it, and, and I hear, I mean, said we we put the base bid together for the new pipe and the abandonment, he put it as adults, we can eliminate the adults and just bid it as just leave it, you, you know what I mean, the adults in, in a contract, like I said, you don't have to accept or deny, I mean, obviously, we would have to go for the, the full funding with the adults, just in case we wanted to accept them, but if, if the consensus is, um, you know, we don't even want the adults, I'm gonna have to have Ziad remove them, I mean, I, I I, I see both sides, I mean, obviously, there's some advantage, you know, the redundancy just in case, but I also, I understand everything you guys are saying. You know, we've had one for whatever amount of years we've had since we put it in.
I, I will point out that, you know, if we do not do a second pipe, and we have some kind of, you know, some imaginable, you know, a, a hard-to-imagined problem, uh, you know, con, another contractor hits it or whatever, and we do have to move, we, we, we have to, our only alternative at that point will be move it by truck. But, you know, we will have to move sewage.
Yeah, but if a contractor hits it, they'll be paying for the truck, not us.
That's, that's true, um, um, you know.
Yeah. That's why they buy insurance.
Yeah, something unimaginable, you know, earthquake, whatever, but it's a lot, it's a lot of money.
Yeah. I was gonna say.
Yeah, this pipe, this pet pipe will last north of sixty years, easy.
I, I agree.
Um, I was just gonna say, I didn't know we were gonna get into the detail at this stage for this, and, you know, overall, more important, I think we want to keep this moving, I mean, we've been talking about this pipe for like two years plus. And, you know, COVID was some of that time, uh, I don't think we want to do anything to delay the bid process or package, I mean, taking something off shouldn't be a big deal, Kevin, I agree, but um, I, I guess I just, I, I want to know, are we gonna keep opening it up the question and, uh, you know, changing the structure of that package, because that, that definitely, that will be possible with environmental partners, plus I, I can't think we, every time we have an incident, it's a half million dollars, so that's why we're looking at doing this, so if we put it out, and God forbid we have an accident, whatever, some kind of breakage, we're out half a million right there, so. But that's all, I just want to encourage that keeping this thing moving, we got to get it through town hall and, uh, just.
Well, that's the thing.
Or not.
If you, if you're gonna make a presentation to town, um, to the, uh, selectmen, have Ziad make a selectman, they're gonna want to know a number.
Right, that, that's, that's what it comes down to, if, if we want to remove the adults, then obviously the funding comes down to whatever, thirteen change, maybe gets to low thirteenth, I don't know, you know, Ziad can run all the numbers. So that, that's, yeah, I, I would agree, I, I, you know, if, if I mean, we're a board, and, and we can certainly, we can vote, discuss, I mean, I don't know if it needs to be a vote, but maybe it is. You know, whether we want to keep the adults. So that's all it comes down to, is presenting the number, obviously, we got to fund the full amount just in case, um, we can't fund it. We can't have the adults if we don't have the funding.
Yeah, why, I mean, we don't have to, we don't have to vote the, uh, the adults.
Well, I'm saying.
Go for that money.
Well, I think if we want to have the adults in the bid documents, we have to have the funding to cover it, even if even if we don't think we're ever gonna use it, and we're not gonna do the adults, but if, if that's the case, you know, if, if, if the consensus of the board is, hey, we, we're never gonna want to, it just doesn't make sense to have a second pipe, a redundant system, then why even put it in the, the documents? You know what I mean? Well, that's, and that's what I'm saying, so I think that decision does need to be made now. Um, if, 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 if the general consensus is, you know, the majority of the board, that we don't we, we'd never pick up the alternates, even if I'm gonna make up numbers, the whole bid, even with the alternates, comes in at twelve million dollars. We would still wouldn't pick up the alternates, and, and we'd do a nine to ten million dollar project. You know. I think that was the only, you know, some of the thought process, we put it in there, things are very competitive, maybe we get it all for whatever, a couple million less than what we think. But if, if the uh, the thought is that even if this comes in under budget, we're still not gonna take the alternates, then it makes no sense to put it in the contract.
Oh, my opinion is, did, does everybody on this board understand how many people out there are going to struggle with a three-dollar increase in their sewage? Whether they go to do halls and get their medicine, or do they pay their sewer bill? That's what it's gonna come down to, guys. To have an alternative pipe that we're not gonna turn on, and we're gonna, you know, two and a half, say it's three million. That's a lot of money for a pipe in the ground that we're not gonna use.
I agree, I agree, I mean, obviously, I have, uh, elders, uh, in-laws, and my parents, you know, they're on fixed income, so I understand that, you know.
We had this argument with Dennis, I think, uh, one day when I was in here, about I was adamant that I was gonna vote for this raise, and he explained that we had no money, as well as I think Kevin did to myself, and reluctantly, yeah, I went along with the increase, uh, and I gotta agree with Wayne, in my fixed income, which I am on now, it's gonna hurt. What do I give up? I mean, I don't like the increases, I understand why it has to be increased, but I mean, any way we can save, like Wayne said, abandon that pipe, it's been in the ground thirty years. What good is it gonna serve, even if we line it like Mark said? Put in the new stuff and forget the old stuff. Put in the new stuff and forget the old stuff.
And may, and and like I said, maybe, just maybe, and 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 I I don't know this, I don't think anybody here does. Maybe we only have to go up two dollars or two fifty and 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 so that's a lot. That's money that people can keep in their pockets, um, I would like to, I would like to have a second pipe too. But not at a cost of two and a half or three million bucks, it's just. It, I just think it's foolish to spend that money.
We we'd be bummed, I mean, it would be really great to have it and to have a great insurance policy for two million dollars. But you imagine it sat there for twenty-five years and we never touched it, and I think we spent two million on it and we never use it. Or or that, or we line it, or we line it and it collapses because of the outside, not from the inside, so. I don't know, it's a lot of money, but if it's something we, you know, in the future that we know at least it's there. Like, how bad is it gonna get? Or maybe we could ask the yet, how bad is it gonna get if it just sits there without being lined? You know, and we don't look at it, is it gonna be something that could be used in the future, you know? Dennis, what's your thoughts on that?
I would think that at that point, you, if you decide to abandon it, you're gonna abandon it forever, you know, um. You know, there's, you know, there's a lot of, I'm sure Kevin could, but there's a lot, uh, uh, of things to think about, you know, the contractor's there, you haven't paved the road. Um, but, you know, it is, it's it's a, it's a basically a two, two, you know, a a a two million dollar option. You know, if you, if you just, you know, just roughly on on the prices here, you know, it or it. With all the options in, we're at fourteen-six, if you take the options out, we're down to thirteen, just a little over thirteen million for this project. You know, and we were at fourteen-six, we were thought, talking about, you know, the article that we were gonna present at town meeting in January. Was gonna be for sixteen million, you know, for, cuz we wanted some room, you know, so if we, if we, if we uh go. Eliminate the the alternates, um, you know, and and, uh, you know, taking them off brings us down to a little over thirteen million. You know, I would think that we could, you know, reduce the article by two million dollars.
That's huge.
Fourteen, you know.
That's huge, that's a lot of money, that's a half a DPW building, guys.
And it's, you, when you, when you, you know, I mean. It would be nice, I mean, that, we we look at it, it's in great shape and and we, you know, easily, or even for less money than they're they're talking about. Get it fixed, alright, but it could go the other way too, you could spend the one, you know, the um, um. You could spend the one point two million, uh, in looking at the pipe, investigating and finding out it's junk.
I can guarantee you.
You know, for for, you know, and then, uh, then it, then it's absolutely not worth going for the four forty, you know, the four hundred thirty-seven thousand. Um, and if it, and uh, or you for, you know, you for, you, you know, you do the investigation and you. And you come up with, well, the four hundred thirty-seven's not gonna be enough, we need, we need another couple of hundred, or we need another half a million, and then we can fix it. You know, so.
That's my thought, Dennis.
It's a gamble, it, you know, it's a gamble, you know, I mean, you either cut it, you know, just, you know, stay low now, you know, uh, or or. Or commit yourself, you, you know, you know, um, cuz if you do, if you do A, you're intending to do B. If A turns out good.
Exactly.
Alright, and but, and if you do, if you do A and it's and it's junk, alright, you're not gonna do B, but you spent the one point two to to look.
I I I. So Dennis, I'm get, I'm catching your feeling on the pipe, and I mean, uh, what's your?
I, I mean, I I'd love to have a redundant pipe, who who, you know, as superintendent, who would? But I also understand what what, you know, I mean, also understand the position that Wayne and 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 Kenny are in. You know, is is that, you know, you're right, I mean, you know, and uh. You, you know, I believe Wayne's right, people are gonna lose their minds.
And 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 Dennis, you're you're absolute, I can, I can almost see the pipe under the ground going through Southfield. And going through that swamp in Brockton, that can't, that pipe cannot be good. So once we get down there and we look and see that, then what's the cost?
Oh, they were spending so much money just to see it.
Right, but then, when, once we find the pump pipe is junk, then, oh, well. If you put it, put in another thousand feet of ductile iron, then we, you know, that that's what it's gonna come down to.
The only alternative I could offer, uh, would be, um, if we were to ask the add in, you know, here, you know, every time you ask the add, it costs money.
Yeah.
Alright, but if you were asking to just do the investigation on Auburn Street, with the part that we need to pave. And you could save the investigation of the rest, you could save the rest of that for five years down the road or something.
That pipe's fine.
But I, I'm not in the, I'm, yeah, I'm, I, I'm not in the favor of doing, you know, that came up at one of the capital projects group meeting. Why don't we just do part of it, or why don't we just do the part here? You're not gonna fix half a roof, you're not gonna fix half a road, you're not gonna fix half a sidewalk, I don't wanna fix half a pipe, you mean, it's it's all or none, I mean.
And well, you're looking at, you're looking at Auburn Street where clearly it's in good soil, or or decent soil.
No, that, yeah, it's it, in the, in the, uh, corrosion report, there are three spots on Auburn Street too.
So I mean, I just.
So, what about, what about, what about that pipe? You know, never mind Southfield, that, obviously, that area is probably not that good. But what about the Auburn Street area of having that, so a bypass in the future, maybe not now, in the future, having that as a bypass? You know, like, so you're saying, like, if there's an issue just for that area, the road that's paved, or, I don't know, I'm not trying to create more work. Um, it's just, hey, disregard what I'm saying, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, you know?
It's it's sound, I mean, I guess, it it it, obviously, it sounds like the the. We just wanna remove, you know, as a board, we remove the alternates, we bid it as just a, put a new pipe in. You know, Z I had said it plenty of times, all we have to do to the old pipe legally is just let it drain back to wherever it drained backs to. Might be a little bit of vac work here and there, if there's some really major low points, um. Cap it and cut it and forget it.
Disassemble a couple of manholes.
Right, right, break it, break down some manholes, you know, basic stuff, um, so. I mean, this, what I'm hearing, it sounds like it, um, you know, and then we we go to bond with a lesser value.
I think that that's a great idea.
I agree, don't mean to add any more confusion, you know, I know it's been a long project for you guys, I've only been here a short time.
Dave, any last, any, Dave, 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 any comments or?
No, no, I don't want you to think that I want the extra plate necessarily either, I think we should have the caveat to talk to Z I, that's all. Um, he's the design, the guy that's stamping it, so.
But if we talk to Z I, it costs money every time we open.
Hey, listen.
He's, he's gonna have to revise the 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 budget estimate, remove the bid alternate A and B, remove it. I mean, bid documents, it really shouldn't change, I really may not change anything, you really just gotta take some sections out, if you even had them in there.
Yeah, I think it's a ten-minute phone call.
I mean, to be honest, he had a, the whole S R F funding by losing that, he had to change the spec. You know, when we didn't get S R F funding, he had a, not drastically, but he had to take sections out. That didn't apply anymore and put sections in that do apply, cuz S R F has certain regulations, so, you know, unfortunately, he's had to make some revisions. Um, I'll say. I think, you know, the environmental partners usually have been pretty fair to us, he's attended, make way more meetings than he needed to, but. I don't know, I don't know if there's been up bills, or I don't.
And I, I wanna separate it from the rate discussion, because the the rates, we, and I don't think we should decide tonight. We have to discuss, there's so much more we have to fix in town, so much more infrastructure.
Yep.
You know, me personally, if we don't fix it for ten or twenty years, okay, but I mean, that's has to be a conscious decision by the whole board, um, so. It gets spent on this, uh, sidewalks, DPW building, whatever, other pipes and, um, water main breaks. That seem to be happening, so, uh, that's all, so, yeah, let's, uh, just, uh, get it over with and.
So Dennis, can you reach out to Z I and we'll just move forward with? We'll just move the adults.
I would, I suggest we tell him that that's the way you guys would wanna do it, and, you know, but because of the cost, but, you know, these. You know, I'm, the way this bit, you know, the way I read this bit is that the, those things were always all, you know, um, options.
There were options, it's just, we have to, we would have to go, we'd have to get the bond for the full value. We couldn't go get a bond for thirteen million if we had a project that could potentially. We. Cost sixteen with the adults, that that's, and and and, you know, a lot of it. All people here is sixteen million, sixteen million, sixteen million, well, thirteen million's less than sixty million, you know what I mean, it's just a number. If you don't, you know, there's plenty of people that know the details and and understand the project, but there's plenty of people that it's just a number, so. Alright. We've kept Peter waiting way too long here. Have we all said, I don't know if anyone else talked about the force main, we can come back to the project, I just wanna, Peter's been waiting, I wanna get Peter. On and get the executive session, so we can get that done, we can come back to discuss more about the force main if we need to.
I'm, I'm using my times.
Alright, so, uh, we need to go in executive session, according to Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight. Paragraph twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to clearly in ineminently threatened and demonstrably likely litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body in chair, so declares. So someone can make a motion.
Motion to go in executive session as read.
Seconded by Ken, roll call, uh, vote, Ken.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Okay, so we need to, who has control? Dave and Bob, we got.
So next, we had, uh, Mark Invenisi, um, request for a, to be on the drain layer list. Um, he sent a letter out. Stating his qualifications, thirty years' experience, excavation. Fully insured, holds workman's comp, um, working in conjunction with Dave Holdley. Um, so he's asking to be put.
Who's he, who's he working with?
Dave Holdley.
He's gonna be working with Dave Holdley.
I make a motion that we, uh, we put Mr. Invenisi on the, uh, the drain laying list.
I second that.
Uh, we have a motion by Wayne, seconded by Mark, is there any other further discussion?
I just had one question on, I think it's, uh, Invenisi, did we have a bond issue we were changing at one point, is that all done? Like, uh, I think Dennis, you brought this up a couple of months ago, uh, did we change the bond amount or?
Oh, yeah, before they started the job, they had a, instead of putting just fifty thousand or whatever it was in there, they had to do like three hundred thousand. Something like that, you know, so that they wouldn't get their money back or just ignore it and walk away.
Something like that, I don't know about those numbers, but yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I'm just using random numbers too, but that way they don't just walk away and say, eh, fifty thousand, I'm gonna collect it from the people. I'm doing the work for anyway, so who cares, I'll walk away from it, even if I don't finish the job.
Right, just something.
I mean, whatever he, whatever the number is, he's gonna put it up.
Yeah, it's for everybody, same for everyone, but I I know Mark very well, I've known him for a long time, and he's a, he's a great contractor.
Oh, I got no problem with him.
He's very good.
I'm just going on what Wayne said, I mean, what Dave said, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, he's, obviously, there's, uh, stipulations in place for that. Yeah, so, I don't see Mark, uh, you know, I'm sure you'd have that.
And, just to time in, Dennis, are you there? I I, I believe for the drain layers list, this is to make repairs to. Sewer service and or, uh, water services to residential houses, this is. This is not a developer building.
Okay.
Putting down.
No.
Fifty thousand.
He wants to be on, right, he wants to be on the, on the list, you know, the, that we have, which in our list is getting shorter these days, much, you know, than it used to be. And, um, so he would be able to, you know, uh, he wouldn't have to come back to you every time. And generally, all we do is, the drain layers list is require proof of insurance and a recommendation from somebody. You know, uh, another, uh, you know, so that's how, you know, other, you know, the, like Warner Brothers, they got on with proof of insurance and just a recommendation. And, you know, the, and and this is only for installing sewer, you know, uh, in the past, it's always been that if somebody that wanted to repair, uh, water line. You know, they they just need to provide proof of insurance and, uh, but there is no list for for repairing water lines. It was only, the list was only for sewer installations.
So is this, is this for Invenisi, is that only for sewer or water?
Um, to, the drain layer list is for sewer only.
He's looking to do sewer and water. Yeah.
Alright, but there is no water.
So it's full. Yeah, he initially wanted, he initially wanted to get on the, to get on a list where he would be. One of the pop, one of the contractors recommended to do water services. Dennis, Dennis said, Dennis told him that he, there was no real actual list that we had for people to repair water services. So, a lot of times, we, people would say, well, who do, what list do you have, and we had the list that was for sewer. Uh, services, so, and they would usually call off of that list. So to be able to get on that list to hopefully get himself some business for sewer and or water. Um, that's why he was really requesting it on.
I just, I just, I just grabbed that list a few years ago, and there's only, you guys only had a handful of guys on it.
Right, yeah, it's, it's been with, it's, you know, people retired, they got old, they stopped going, I mean, there's people on the list that. Don't, you know, haven't installed a sewer in years, you know, and, um, uh, but this, you know, they're, they're, you know. When people have a water problem and and they ask you, they're looking for somebody as a contractor, who can I call? And we basically, you know, we have to say, you know, I I tell my guys to be very careful about this, you know, you, we cannot recommend anybody. We can tell you who's on our list that does drains, and they also do water, okay, but we're not recommending anybody, you know. We can tell you who does the most in this town, but we're not, we can't recommend anybody.
He's given a list.
And then like I say, there's never been, there, you know, as far as I know, you know, I'm aware, there had never been a water repair list or a water service list. There's always just been proof of, you know, proof of insurance required and, uh, and 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 a recommendation from somebody, a letter of recommendation. And most of these guys have, you know, I mean, any of the good ones, they have several.
Right, no, that's fine, yeah, thanks for clarifying, it's, it's kind of two separate issues, let's, you know, continue with, uh.
So we have a motion and second to put Mark on the list. Um, Ken.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Wayne. You there, Wayne?
Step away.
He's sort of there.
I mean, yes.
I mean, yeah.
Ah, there we go.
There he is.
There he is.
Sorry.
That's alright.
What are you on the beach?
Some beach somewhere.
Robert Veloso, Robert Veloso, Water Systems Operation Class Completion, obviously.
Okay, so you you remember that you reported, um, moved Robert up as a, uh, class, you know, as a sewer operator. He also is, uh, uh, completed the, uh, System Operation Class, this is just a notification that our number four draft pick there. Has, uh, is still applying itself and going through the, uh, to the classes, I don't expect it to, you know, this is just a notification. This isn't asking for anything as a result of it.
Good, that's good, he, good for him.
Yep.
Glad to hear it. Uh, employee resignation, so we got a letter from Patrick Smith. That, uh, due to personal reasons, he was, um, resigning effective March nineteenth. From the Whitman Department of Public Works, he said he enjoyed working here for the five years. And misses boss and coworkers. That's it, so, I guess that's, been in five years, I assume he's been a good employee. Too bad.
Yeah.
We're losing another person.
So, Pocket Tree.
So, yeah, Pat, Pat's been over in the Pocket Tree, started out the water division, he's been a good worker, as his letter stated, he's. He's, uh, he's resigning for personal reasons, I believe he's gonna move south, and, um, good guy, we're doing the best, uh. And, uh, that being said, I took the liberty of, uh, getting the ball rolling by posting a Pocket Tree Division opening. On bulletin board for this week, just. On bulletin board for this week, just to make sure that nobody wants to make a lateral move. And then, I'll set the, um, I'll set the ball motion to. Got looking at new candidates by placing ad in our website. Social media and probably the Whitman Express. And so, we can get a guy in here, hopefully, you know, by the time, soon as we landed, by the time we're, um, starting to get really busy with, uh. Pocket Tree stuff, which is not that far away.
Was there any candidates, I mean, from, that was what, two, three months ago?
I'm gonna go back and look, um, at the, some of the, um, resumes that we had from the past. Uh, I, nothing jumps out at me that I recall that we had a guy, you know, but I'm hoping to get somebody that's experienced in landscaping and. You know, knows a little bit what he's doing, and, um, you know. I'm hoping this type, this type of year, there's landscaper types out there looking for jobs. This is when the guys are coming out of being laid off for the winter, and I think, uh, you know, it'd be a good, a good job for, you know, somebody. That's in that profession, to jump in here.
I think the past resumes were more highway, highway guys.
Brother, okay.
Yeah, if I, if I remember correctly.
Can we, uh, we can advertise, I know we have to say truck driver, do we have to say truck driver labor, or can we just say landscape worker?
Well, I, you know, and I was gonna kind of run that by the board and see if they give me a little latitude there, I was gonna advertise for, uh, you know, uh, somebody. A landscaper for the, within the Pocket Tree Division, DPW, and just put in there willing to obtain. A CDL within a certain amount of time, uh, it might be easier to get a guy in that's got the experience, and. If we give him, you know, a couple, few months to get that CDL, it's not critical in the summer for a Pocket Tree employee to have that. You know, as long as he gets it before we can roll around to next winter. Um, you know, similar to what we've done with, you know, one of the younger guys we have now, uh, we allowed him that, so. It might be worth it if we get the right candidate.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good idea.
Even put just like C, CDL preferred.
Yeah.
You know, just so we protect our, yeah, I mean, I, I would agree that. We've done it for, we've done it for a few people.
Preferred but not required, and then.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
What kind of timeframe you looking for to allot them, uh, if they do come in without the CDL?
Well, I would say, you know, I would say, you know, ninety is fair, uh, there's, there's definitely issues with getting tests. Uh, due to COVID, still happening, so, um, I think ninety.
Till September.
As long as they make a good faith effort to, you know.
They're gonna have to get their permit and all that, and so. You're seeing the progress.
Yep.
Um, can I ask something about Patrick?
No.
As you know, he was, he was, uh, he was on the water department prior to getting on, uh, landscape, and he's asked if. If, uh, for a letter of recommendation, and I, I wanna, uh, I, I, I would certainly be willing to give one.
Absolutely.
I didn't, I didn't know if the, I didn't know if the board could also, um. Give a letter of recommendation, cause basically, he's, he's, you know, it's, it's explaining to me, he just can't afford to live here, his, his rent went up by fourteen hundred dollars. And, um.
Yeah, and he's also has, he has some family issues too, I know Pat very well, he's a great guy, a hard worker. Um, and he's got some other things going on that, um, warmer climates would be beneficial to his family, so. He's a great guy.
Yeah, Dennis, you or Amy just wanna drop a letter, and we can sign it as a board or whatever.
Okay, yep.
That's fine. Good. Uh, last in new business, Little League.
Little League.
Little League.
A quality issue, what's going on?
So, so, uh, I'm not sure if the board members were all able to read that email like forwarded you Sunday and received Sunday morning.
I did.
Yes, I did see it.
So, I have several issues, uh, a couple of years back with the previous rec director, um. He started getting into what I would call the business of renting out town baseball fields. Charging fees to private leagues to use our fields. And, when I talk about the fields, I'm only talking about the fields that the Whitman DPW tried maintaining, the two park fields and the memorial field. I don't care what they do at the middle school, they wanna charge up there, but, I don't know, fundamentally, I think that. I don't even like the idea of being in the field rental business, I don't like the idea of renting the fields though, in my opinion. Uh, the fields should go to all town. They scheduled, they, they submit their schedule for whatever, whatever it may be, soccer, lacrosse. Baseball, softball, for all the fields that we deal with, and then if there's any open space after that, if a. Private league wishes to use our town fields and use, go through the rec and schedule that, that's fine. I mean, the fields aren't made there to be empty, I'm not in favor of renting out the soccer field so much to private leagues, because it's not. That field will turn to mud if it's played on five days a week, but a baseball field's not gonna show wear and tear like that, cause, you know, you just rake the dirt. Um, so that's one part of, you know, the email that I don't like, the other part that I don't like is, it seems like the Little League. Is suggesting that they want to essentially take over the maintenance of Memorial Field. And get paid by those rental fees, and, um. Certainly have an issue with that, certainly do not want to relinquish. Maintenance of the Memorial Field, which has always been maintained by the Whitman DPW. I mean, I can go through the list of what we do there every year, and it's a lot more than just raking the dirt around home plate and the pitcher's mound. Uh, poop pickup, fence repair, uh, you know, the, the, the bleachers. Fertilizing, line striping for various leagues, uh, you name it, so I could go on and on, I, I just looking for the board's. Uh, input or support of, if they feel the same as me to, if we end up having to have a. Joint meeting with rec, and I believe it seems, seems like because he was CC'd on it, you know, that Justin Evans from the Selectmen might be a. Um, liaison to the Board of Recreation, I, I'm, I'm not sure on that, but I, I'm assuming that.
Well, uh, one second, uh, that's a, that's a union issue too, um, those are union jobs. Um, that, that maintain those fields, um, I am, I can't imagine that the union wouldn't. Have a problem with that, they would, um, it's, that, that's their job. So.
And, you know, the, the email also suggests that, you know, kind of, uh, the poor DPW, I wanna take the weight off their shoulders. Uh, you know, they, fertilizer and et cetera, well, part of my budget is to maintain. Even though my budget's not broken down line by line like that, but it's built into my budget that I maintain the memorial field, I, you know. Fill potholes, buy signs, you know, stuff for the park, I buy fertilizer, pallet fertilizer every year. And I fertilize the memorial field and, and, and the, the field and the park, or anything like that.
I got disconnected for a while, sorry.
Okay, so, you know, if I need help there, you know, I actually ate the dogs to chase the goose, geese off the field the last couple of years. You know, um, sprinkler system repair, if it's something that my guys can't handle, which they usually do, they'll replace sprinkler heads and things like that. But if it's something a little more technical for the irrigation system, then I call in the, the company that takes care of it, and if I have trouble. It's a high bill, I may approach the leagues for a little help or recreation, but. In other words.
No.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I, I, I.
I, I agree a hundred percent, um, and, and, you know, we'll let the rec director and, and. I'm, I'm, I'm back involved with Hanson, Women Hanson Softball, so I'm knee deep in a similar issue. But, uh. Um, yeah, I agree a hundred percent, it's, we maintain them, and, and Bruce, if they get back into the rental business. Well, you know what, if basketball rents the, the high school or the middle school, will they pay for a janitor, right?
Right, right.
If, if AAU and whatever team, whatever league is gonna rent the baseball field. And a couple guys get a couple hours overtime on a Saturday. To go empty the trash, and I know we've done that on other things, or do a little maintenance. Then that's, that's the cost that that league or AAU or whatever, I mean, like I said, no different. And, and, you know, the school, they charge rec leagues, you know? You know, I mean, the fields, the fields are there for the rec leagues, rec leagues to use, you know, Little League softball, soccer, whoever, lacrosse. Um, yeah, I, I, one, I would never give it up, I don't wanna give it up, and.
It's the DPW's job, period.
And I think we, you know, I think we do a, a, a fair job maintaining the memorial field, I think it always looks good, I think the upper baseball field. Is, you know, one of the nicest Little League fields in the park, in the town, um, you know, near the bandstand there, and, uh, you know. I, I think this can be too many chefs, we, we had problems, you know, I, I wanted to put, I actually am. Thinking about padlock in the irrigation control system, because too many guys were, they actually broke the lock.
They need to do that.
Um, on the door, because different people wanted to shut it off, turn it on, you know, the, the, this idea of adding dirt to the infield every year. Uh, is wrong, the dirt doesn't go away, uh, it raises the infield up, and, uh. You know, that's why we have to cut the edges down every five or six years, so. I think we got a handle on it, and, uh, just looking for the board's opinion, and I think I have it.
Yeah, that's, that, that's the DPW's job, and, uh, it's also, like I said, it's a union job. Um, those are union jobs that, that the union's not willing to give up, so.
Yeah, I agree, if, uh, you know, if there's AAU, which it does happen. Uh, they may have five or six games over a weekend on Memorial Field, we come in Monday morning, and the barrels are overflowing. Uh, if they wanna hire a guy to come in Saturday for a four hour minimum. You know, empty the barrels, rake the field, maybe, you know, stay right for their full four hours, you know, and, uh, dress it up maybe between the first and second game. Then he's on his way.
But I think that, that Dennis, uh, Dennis, uh, Bruce could be the requirement.
Yeah.
Of, hey, you're gonna have all these games on a Saturday, you have to hire two guys to come in. That, that's it, that, that's part of it, like I said, the, the school has no problem charging, you know. Wayne just stepped out, and I'm sure Wayne has paid plenty of times to use, I know he has, for the football fields and of the high school, and I know. Leagues pay to use the basketball, you know, they gotta pay the janitor or whatever, so. It's not a, hey, you wanna, it's, that's what you're gonna have to do.
Yeah, and I, I'm a little sour on the whole rental thing, you know, like, I don't need to, I'm not looking to see the fields empty every time we drive by them. Cause I know women Little League at that age level has, uh, you know, diminished, um, you know. Involvement, but I also don't understand where, where all of a sudden, in the last two years. We decided we're gonna start renting fields and making a money-making thing for our town park and our memorial field, I mean.
Well, it's, every, everybody and their, their buddy opened up a club, club team. Everybody has clubs and everybody has private teams, and, you know, they need places to play.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no club football.
Right.
It's like the Marines, you know?
Well, I'm sure this is gonna be probably a little bit of an on, ongoing discussion between. You know, probably the board and probably, uh, Little League and the rec director, I have not met her yet. Um, you know, from what I understand, there's a couple rec board members that are involved in AAU, so. You know, there could be, you know, a little pushback, but we'll see how it goes, and we'll talk to, uh. The liaison from the Selectmen to the rec board, and, uh.
Bruce, uh, one other thing I was gonna mention, I was curious to check into if you need to, is follow up is, uh, liability too, I mean, it's. There's reasons DPW has a union potential issue, the reason you, you need to be, the DPW needs to be in charge, so. You know, if they do something wrong or someone gets hurt, they're gonna probably come after the DPW anyway, so, uh, we just wanna make sure we're.
Sure.
Some of that, yeah, but.
No, in the last little bit of that, I, I added in the, my little email Sunday was that, you know, our, our mechanics just spent a great deal of time. Uh, resurrecting our field tractor, which we thought we were gonna have to put in the heat, in the scrap heap, you know, it's. From the seventies probably, but, uh, they got it up and running, they resurrected it, they painted it, all to maintain the memorial field in the low field. And, uh, rather than ask the town twenty, for twenty-three thousand dollars to buy us a new one, so.
Hey, Dave, Dave Lemay, you on? Dave.
He's there.
He's hanging around.
Mute it.
Mute it.
Unmute yourself, Dave.
There he is.
Hey. Dave.
Maybe you got tired.
Dave, you on?
He's un.
Here, but he can't talk.
He's unmuted.
Yeah.
I guess not.
Oh, okay, there he is.
Am I there?
Yeah, I just, I have a question for you. Uh, you have to show up, Stuart.
Yep.
Um, you wouldn't be in favor of having it somebody else doing union work, right?
Absolutely not.
Outsiders, no, I didn't think so either.
Thank you, thank you, I, I just wanted, I wanted to hear from you.
The DPW is maintaining that all the fields, like Bruce was saying, the upper field, lower field, memorial field for all these years. We, we, we're not gonna want them, anybody to take them over.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it. Bruce.
Yes.
Yes. What's gonna happen with that field where you had the, uh, people growing stuff last year, is that gonna be again this year?
Yeah, the community garden had, uh, I think, a great first year, um. I've already had quite a few emails and contacts from people wanting to do it again, and new people wanting to come in. Um, so I think that's just gonna grow, there's been, there's been talk of people doing some perennial things like blueberry bushes or strawberries. Early route, so, yeah, I think, let it go, I mean, until, if, if somebody ever came up with, you know. A bunch of dough and said, hey, we, we really need that field, and we're gonna resurrect it, then. You know, we revisit it, but I think for now, it's a great use of the, uh, piece of property that really was unusable.
Yes, okay, good, no, I'm just serious, I know, I saw it, everything's still sitting there, I didn't know if it was gonna be dismantled or. Back to a playing field or what, so I just thought I'd ask.
Bruce, are you invited to the field usage meetings, for the field usage meeting that they're gonna have, or are you typically invited to that?
I don't think that they're gonna have one, I just, uh, I've been in contact with Kathleen Woodward, she's the new director.
Yep.
And, um, I sent all my information for youth football to her, um, she seems very pleasant, I, I haven't met with her, but. Um, I don't think that they're gonna have a, a field usage meeting, they're doing everything, uh, online.
Okay, yeah, I, I had to do the same for softball, I didn't know if she was gonna do something just remotely or whatever, alright, but she's got both of us.
Yeah.
Alright. Um. Quickly, uh, update on, on the old business for Complete Streets. Um, Bruce and I met with Environmental Partners a few weeks ago, went over some different things, Bruce. Um, you know, some more work that the DPW could do, um, bottom line is, we got it down to. About where we want for, uh, estimate, and we would, um. Include the sidewalk corners, uh, say across the street from the church, so that would be part of the project to do those. As new ramps, um. Um, well, there was always the bump out on the same side as the church, but there was a, across the street, we'll redo the two corners there, so that whole intersection will all be. To current ADA codes, um, and then the, uh, the crosswalk further down, so. Um, it's to that number we talked about last time, using about a hundred thousand of the chapter ninety funds. And then, and it could go down, if we dig up all the sidewalk and it's all nice gravel underneath there, which we expected will be. Then, the price goes down because it's a unit price, they get paid per ton or cubic yard, so. If they, we strip it all off and Bruce says, hey, you know what, that gravel's fine, then we save even more money. Um, Bruce, what was the timeline, was he saying this week, or next week, I think, he'd have final bid documents?
I, I think it's gonna be next week at this point. He said, I corresponded with him today. And, uh, he just reiterated what we wanted and he would say, said he'd have those, so I assume it's gonna be next week at this point.
Okay. So, get at the bid, beginning of April. Should be bidding it by the middle of April, third week of April and. You know, it would be ideal if we could, you know, we won't make the April meeting, but maybe the May meeting that we could vote on a contract and get it going. Get it done and over with.
Yep.
Before summer. So, I think it'd be nice, it'd be a nice project. I think we, we highlight that as much as possible. You know, through Bruce's efforts with getting the bond, getting the, uh, the funding and, and all that, I think will go a long way on the PR side.
Sure.
Through force man, I think we talked about enough of that. Uh, Dennis, you talking to Ziad, maybe just mentioning him about March twenty-third. About him doing a presentation.
Yeah, I think he was originally, he thought we were gonna do it tonight, actually. Um, uh, um, but, uh, he, he's more than willing to come.
Yeah, I didn't, one, I didn't, I knew we had a full docket. I didn't wanna put Peter off. The, the executive session was much more important. To get that done and so, um, and I guess, any board members welcome to attend if. There's more than three of us, more than two of us, we'll have a joint meeting, but. Let me know if anybody, it'd be the twenty-third, I think they meet at seven. We'll go through the project with them.
Now, we're not going to, uh, include the add-ons, right?
We will, we'll have Ziad remove the adults.
Adults, yeah.
Yep. The new building, did you guys, were you guys ever able to meet with Ziad and his architects? Did he come out?
Dave, looks like he's talking, but I, I didn't hear.
We had a, uh, we had a Zoom meeting with Ziad and the architect, um, myself and Dennis. Productive, uh, we kinda corrected some ideas that the architect had as far as. The way the building or the way the things in the building were gonna be situated, he really offered up a very. Uh, elementary sketch really of like what he thought and, uh. So we, we corrected some things on that and, uh, I think we're all on the same page and they are well aware that we need something. By, was it the end of this month, Dennis? They said we were gonna have something so we could present to the selectmen to hopefully.
That's what they're aiming for, um, you know. That's getting tight to, to have something to present, uh, that they can, you know, get behind.
Yeah, cuz the warrant's already open, right? The warrant's already open for town meeting.
Yeah, but we have a place, we are, we set up a placeholder. There's an article there.
Yeah, it can, it can be on the warrant and we can just pass over it if we're not ready or we don't have enough info, just pass over.
Right. Well, the other thing that could say, you know, if they, if they delay town meeting again, I mean, we might not be ready in May. But there's a good possibility we could be ready by the end of June.
True. Um, kids are going back to school in April, why can't we have a town meeting in May? Sorry.
Yeah.
Shouldn't say that when I'm recording.
Say that out loud?
Sorry.
So, um.
Town hall even open yet?
No, neither, yeah, neither we though. Um. Ziad did say that, you know, he's, you know, with the, the, he had one hundred by one seventy-five and, and the requirements, you know. To design build stuff, we're probably looking at eight.
Well, he said eight and then I told him that was, uh, a very disappointing number and then he said. Then he backpedaled and said, I threw eight, he, he was, then he backpedaled like more like six point three. Didn't wanna promise anything, uh, until he ran some more numbers, uh, he's already done a bunch of the site work numbers, he said. So, he said, they asked us drop dead date and we said, I believe, the first April. Uh, to have actual numbers, so we'll have them then.
Funding source?
Well, funding sources is gonna be a bond and or, uh. Monies from Water and Sewer Enterprise, they're not, to be determined, the amount.
Yeah, I mean, this is where I'd wanna use some of the water sewer enterprise funds, you know, if we're gonna use it anywhere. You know. A million, maybe two, I would have to, you know. Dennis has been keeping an eye on, I mean, we got some money coming off the books in a couple of years for some projects, but. But I also wanna, you know, Dennis, I talk, we wanna keep our improvement program going too. You know, so we gotta start looking at, you know, okay, where are the next areas that we should be doing water work, you know, in two, three years. You know, the lines that are older, prob, problematic. But I, that's, that's my opinion. I think, I think this is a, a spot to use some water sewer enterprise funds. Just matter how much we could.
Yeah, I mean, if they come in with something six point, something six, say, and the water sewer can pitch in two. We bond for four point, you know. We'll see.
Last time I thought it was three and a half million.
Yeah, well.
It's only gone up double.
Right, we, we.
Steel, well, steel and wood. Steel is two to three times what it was six months ago and wood is about the same.
Yeah.
And it keeps going up. It hasn't, hasn't leveled out consistently every single month. Um, it, it, it's crazy, crazy. And, and I, I don't know, even if it comes back down, it has to come down so much, so I'm sure Ziad is. Certainly seeing that and, and figuring that a little bit, like anything, our, our timing is friggin' perfect.
You mentioned that, uh, we also, as a cost-saving measure, we talked about having a, a two-level. Roof on the building, so in the areas of the building where we need the height, absolutely. And then, you know, coming over to where there's employee facilities, uh. It, it would come down to a, a lower level and that would be cost savings and actually, uh. Make the building look a little nicer, so it didn't just look like a big warehouse, you know? Uh, again, we'll, we'll see what they bring us at the end of the month.
Good. I think I get the impression from talking with him and Bob Kern and that, um, the, you know, we just can't do it as cheaply as. Is a, a private citizen can. The, the laws and the procurement laws and the requirements from, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, your, your, your wage rates and all that are, are.
Right.
Twenty, twenty-five percent more.
Revealing.
You know. Materials are materials, but. That, that's, that's what it is, unfortunately.
I mean, Z, Ziad marketing, he, he mentioned, he says that, that they get, no, no, they got a notification from, um, an outfit in Kentucky that has a, um. A hundred by a hundred and twenty-five building, uh, prepackaged that was, um, uh, uh, the company went bankrupt and they want seventy-two thousand for it.
I used to get those, but yeah, that's the thing, it's kinda like, this thing, yeah, it might, it might be a great deal. But, uh, you have to be ready for what-ifs. Yeah, we, we couldn't even buy it because we violate. Yeah, that's the trouble, yeah. All right, well, sounds like we're still moving in the right direction, which is good. Uh, the only other, and it wasn't on the agenda, but just emails who brought to my attention. That we shouldn't be using personal email, so I asked Josh McNeil to set up all of us. Um, I, um, emailed back and forth with him again the other day. He says he's still working on it, so. Once that gets together, we'll have to switch over. For a few different reasons, so. At WhitmanMass.gov.
No, it makes sense, uh, obviously I get it, you know? I, uh. Using my, uh, personal email is easier, only for this, like. I don't really care if somebody actually, like, if they actually had to attach my email and use it for litigation. I don't have anything that really hide, but that's what the issue is, you know? They grab your personal email. Whatever, whatever you have, what do you, whatever somebody emailed you, you know, you have to worry about it.
So, it comes down to the, the town's ability to, you know, after your commissioner, even during commissioner, if they need your information, being able to get.
And I, 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 I didn't jump, you know, I jumped in only cuz, you know, our town email is a pain in the keister. With getting documents that are large, so.
Yeah, I asked that, I didn't get any response. I didn't know if, what other, what do you guys do? You just use like a, a Dropbox or?
Uh.
Have an email to your personal email?
I mean, for, for me is, in law enforcement, I make, I make people put it on a thumb drive. And then I download it to our friggin', our, you know, our, our, you know, the town. Em, you know, our town, um, computer system, but like I can't get it on an email, like. For me to get like video, video or, or just like a big document, like, but Ziad sending you like the plans, that would never come through. Uh, if you have anything, it, it's like more than like, like a ten or twelve-page Word document. You may not get it. So, whatever, I don't care. I already have a town email, it's easy for me, you know? You guys, you know? It's not a big deal, you know, but like, just getting certain documents can be a pain in the rear end.
Yeah, it's just. Another system we'll have to go in and check, already got enough emails.
Right.
Yeah, but that's more the.
For me, it's easy. Already, I check that one every day, so, uh, it's actually be easy for me to just switch over to, to that, you know? And just make another folder.
Yeah, well, I'll keep everyone updated as I hear. See where that goes.
Uh, next meeting would be. April.
Thirteen. Yeah.
It's the beginning of Ramadan, I can't make it.
Wayne might be your last one.
No, Wayne's gonna have to hang in there till at least, uh, after the June meeting, cuz I won't be around or my meetings might be sketchy. I'll be on the road.
You can do it virtual, it's all virtual.
Waiting for an extension, extension on Wayne.
I think we can vote for that, yep, we can vote for that. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
You're in. Can't leave.
My last meeting, but.
Well, I'm gonna write you in on the ballot.
Oh, Jesus.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yo, I like that.
We'll start, we'll start a write-in campaign.
I'm sure nobody pulled papers.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know.
I haven't, yeah, to be honest, I haven't even looked. I should.
I haven't either, to be honest with you.
So, um, I don't know, before you set a meeting in adjourn, I have something, full disclosure. Um, well, just, uh, you'll be seeing the bill for it, so. Clean it now. Uh, so we had crews, uh, which we usually do in the winter when we have a little less snow. Uh, out clearing drainage, various locations around town. And this week, we went down into a drainage brook. That had a bunch of sediment in front of the head wall, so we wanted to clear it. It's, uh, it's actually right near the garage there, um, off of, uh. Across from the boulevard, there's a access road called Lakeview Street, right? So, they brought the, uh, the radial down there to clear the brook. And in the process, uh, they got into the muck. And it was quite a process getting it out of there. Um, it was probably the worst I've ever seen. I've gotten the machine buried, Dennis will, that's sure, admit that he's gotten the machine buried in the woods. Um.
Never.
We, we called, uh, we called in Jeff Curry, he has a pretty good-sized machine. Brought that down, he spent, you know, more than a few hours trying to pull it out. It was not coming out, um, you know, we had some water issues also, we were de-wiring the hole. Um, but, uh, long story short, we went and, uh, over to Watson's garage and. Thankfully caught them before they went home for the day and he brought down his biggest machine on full bed. And it wasn't easy, but he, he got it out with that large machine and, uh. I think we got out of there a little before nine P M. And, uh, and, and got it back to the garage and the men spent the day. Um, cleaning it all out, fire hydrants, uh, it seems to be none the worse for wear, might need to buy a new plastic fan. Uh, but from, I can show you pictures when I see you again in person, but I, it was ugly. And so, I, I, I will, will be getting a bill from Curry. And, uh, when he had relinquished to watch it, I'll be getting a bill from them. I, I'm not sure what it's gonna be, but, uh. We'll see, it was, you know, had to lose the machine, put a plaque there.
Guess what it is?
Yep.
Yeah, you know.
It happens.
We're learning that lesson a little bit, where to go, where not to go, where not to push it and, uh, you know. Nothing the men did wrong, it's nothing we didn't do in the past, it's sometimes you just, you know, you think you're okay and the machine slides and.
No one got hurt, no equipment got ruined, not a big deal.
Okay.
Thanks.
Hum's the word, thank you.
Yeah.
Not anymore, we just recorded it.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't work.
It's gonna be played every day for the next three weeks. All right, any other, uh, business? Everybody on the board, Dennis, Amy?
Uh, well, I heard we had water main break too yesterday.
We had a couple, right, in the last few weeks?
Couple.
Yeah.
Well. I, I was just gonna email you this later, but, uh, we're chasing a water break on, um, Kay and Harriet. Um, we've been there, um, twice now and we're not, we have not been able to find it. Uh, it, uh, we went up, uh, uh, last week, we dug looking for it, couldn't find it, backfilled. We dug, um, uh, we went out Friday night late and, well, every, that body was, you know, the neighborhood was calm. And we, uh, uh, used a listing vice, we, and did not find it. We know it's a water break because it, once you shut the main off, it quits, it quits, it quits bubbling out of the road. Um, and then Monday, we exposed all the repairs from when they installed the sewer and, and, and none of them are leaking. Um, the problem is that, that, you know, um, it's in a very wet area, Kay and Harriet's very swampy. And we kinda lose, you know, as we're chasing the water leak, we, it gets confused with the groundwater. And we start chasing, you know, and, you know, twice now, we've chased, chased up the pipe, finding out that it's just groundwater that ends up coming out of a sewer trench. So, um, if I don't, if we, and, and so we shut, and we pumped all day on Monday. Uh, we went up there today, we're there all day today and it never surfaced again, so we must have moved a lot of water Monday. Um, and, but we, you know, we fully expect it to, to break out again. It's gotta be a small leak somewhere. Um, and, uh, you know, I'm, I've gotta call in to the people who do our leak detection, uh, for, uh, D E P. And, um, Carl Soper. And, uh, if, you know, we don't come up with some, something pretty soon, we're gonna ask him to, um, come out and see if he can find it.
Okay, wish you luck.
Okay. All right, anything else, member on the board?
Any motion?
Motion.
There you go.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Safe. We'll talk to you.
Thank you, everybody.
Goodnight.
Bye.
Bye now, see ya.